Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Teleconference Meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Prospect Heights. We'll be held, we are holding, on a virtual situation on July 27, 2020, at 6:30 PM. This is Mayor Nicholas J. Helmer. I am presiding the meeting. Karen Schulteis will do the introduction at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. On July 24, 2020, Governor Pritzker issued a new disaster declaration that expires August 22, 2020. However, the terms from the disaster declaration remain unchanged. An executive order 202043 were likewise extended to August 22. Therefore, as we felt it was, the body felt it was prudent not to have the meeting in person, it was decided that the city administrator, Joe Wade, would attend in person while the council and members of the public will continue to attend virtually via Zoom. And therefore, in accordance with the applicable statutes of the State of Illinois ordinances of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council teleconference meeting of the mayor and city council of the City of Prospect Heights being held Monday, July 27, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Mayor Nicholas J. Helmer presiding. The meeting will be recorded and available on the city's website. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the teleconference. There is a five-minute time limit for speakers. During which teleconference meeting is anticipated that there will be discussion and consideration of and is so determined, action upon the matters contained in the following.
Thank you, Karen. To continue with the meeting, the first order of business is to have a vote call to determine that we have a quorum. So where do we go with this? Joanna, you will take the vote call, please. If you're not on mute.
I'm on mute, sorry. Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Quinn?
Here.
Alderman Cameron, are you on mute?
I'm here. Thank you.
All right. That was Alderman Cameron, I presume. All right, so we want to have a motion to conduct this meeting since we do have a quorum, and we can proceed. Can I have a motion to conduct this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Let's move on to the approval of minutes. Our clerk, city clerk Joanna Przydziek, will do that, will call for that.
Okay, for the approval of minutes, Alderman Ludwitzson?
Well, let's give the date of the minutes and make sure everybody understands what they're voting for.
The approval of the minutes is for July 13, 2020.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
A motion to approve as presented.
We have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Quinn.
Quinn for second. Vote, please.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
And Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Let's move on to our city administrator, Joe Wade, to start the meeting with the appointment confirmation and proclamations, if any, and then continue from there. Joe?
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. For tonight, we do not have any appointments, confirmations, or proclamations, which brings us to item four, public comment on agenda matters. And I'll ask the city clerk if we've received any requests for public comment on agenda.
Thank you, Joe. No, I have not for this council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to item five, staff elected officials and commission reports. And we have a few listed on the agenda, beginning with A, Chicago Executive Airport Monthly Update Presented by Director William Kearns.
Good evening, everyone. It's a, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to bring you a report from your Chicago Executive Airport. I'll start with some operational numbers and so forth to kind of give you a sense of what's happening. The month of June was actually quite busy at Chicago Executive Airport. It was what we used to call in the markets kind of a V-shaped recovery, or a snapback recovery. We had operations that were almost exactly what they were in June of 2019. We had 72,326 operations for June, and that was only about 329 operations lower than the previous year, June. For fuel flowage, we did see that we were off the 12-month total by about 32,000 gallons. But for example, June of 2019, we were 478,000 gallons of fuel sold versus 514,858, so actually, I'm sorry, higher for fuel flowage for the month. We're still off on our 12-month trailing numbers by a good bit, but with the months of May, April and May being so low, we, you know, we kind of expected that. In terms of other things happening at the airport, our financials are looking really good. Our staff has done a great job of keeping expenses low while we were in the worst part of that pandemic downturn. We also didn't do our transfers to our reserve funds that we would normally be doing, just trying to keep the cash in the general fund in case we had needed it. For our RSIP, the Acquired Home Program with residential sound installation, we're getting more interest with, from potential eligible residents. Our project manager, Penny Merritt, now reports we have about 275 applications, some of which have come from the Piper Lane area there, which is great that we're starting to get some interest. We hope to start the sound testing of homes in August. Our customs facility, the construction manager is refining the schedule for construction as well as the updating project costs. We may be able to start construction this fall. We have a facility that will be ready for our first U.S. Customs clearance next spring. One other thing, the fire department, both Wheeling and Prospect Heights fire departments will be doing some training at the airport next month, actually, August 18, at Old Hanger Fore Site. And this will be a great opportunity for the both departments to train on the airport in a controlled environment. We have really no major construction projects, other than the customs building that I mentioned. There's some pavement repairs and so forth that we are looking at for the year, but no other major construction. And we've set a tentative date for the joint meeting with the Village of Wheeling and obviously the City of Prospect Heights for September 16, and details on that will be to follow. So that's really about all that I have at this time. I would ask if there were any questions that I might be able to try and answer.
All right. State your name if you have a question and ask the question. Anyone? Bill, you're doing too much with the good stat. Listen, that means that you are not on mute. That's screeching, so please be on mute unless you want to talk. Then you come off mute. Star six is your magic number. All right, last go around. Anybody have any questions regarding the airport facilities and the process and progress that the airport has made?
This is Alderman Cameron. I had a question, Bill. What are the hours for, what are the hours for flying usually? What, like, what time to what time are planes usually able to fly? Or is it up to a certain time at nighttime?
There are no limitations on the hours of flying. The FAA doesn't allow, it's our understanding that the FAA does not allow any restrictions on flying time. Currently, there was one or two airports that were able to get some of those restrictions years ago, but they were grandfathered in that no one else is able to restrict flying time as a federally regulated airport.
Okay, so anybody can fly in at 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, or fly out?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill, I think it should be noted that pilots in their aircraft have a code that term, because I'm sure there's, I don't know, maybe you can correct me. Do we have 24-hour tower regulators up there?
No, we do not have 24-hour.
Thank you. So let me finish then, that the aircraft, all aircrafts have a button, a switch they push, and the lights go on down below you, as good as daytime. And you can land anytime, you always could. So that's good, because you're coming in, you're delayed, something goes wrong, and all of a sudden, it's 1:30 in the morning, and you can land at any time. Any other questions, please? All right, Bill, thank you. Nice presentation. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the next item is the June Treasures Report, presented by Finance Director Sheri Grayfin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and everyone. I'm presenting the June financial report that was included in the packet, and I just wanted to highlight a few particular things that are happening this month. If we can go to page one of the treasures report.
All right.
Top graph, general fund actual versus budget for two months, right there. You'll notice of the two months that, approximately 10% of the year, I want to call attention to our revenue being at 13%, our expenses being at 10%. 13% probably kind of expected, given the expected reductions in some of our revenue streams, but the real highlight is the 10% on the expenses. You look at the next page two of this same report, and you can see by department, our management, our administration, all of our directors are doing a really great job at being conscious of where these expenses are going and what we're actually paying on as-needed basis. So the only item of note is the city council, where they're at the 17% expense. However, that includes annual membership dues that are all paid in the early part of the year. That's what's driving that number up. As far as the other departments go, you can see we're really trying to stay within what we need to spend and really conscious about keeping our cash flow strong. You go to the next page, page three, there's a graph of our major revenue collections. The first most significant tax revenues, we have the sales tax, use tax, income tax, non-home rule tax. Those taxes are still pretty close. They're at 20, 21%. Pretty strong. The reason for that is that those tax revenues we receive on a three-month lag. So the money that we received up through July only brought us through March. The April receipts are going to be coming in in August, and that's where we're going to expect these reductions due to the COVID restrictions. So for right now, pretty strong, but again, those are up through April collections by the state, which we don't receive. MFT, pretty strong as well. We got 178,000 on our grant received this month, so that's included in the MFT number of the 19% revenue to date. We're real strong on the vehicle stickers. That is due to the deferral for the fiscal 2021 stickers being extended through to July. So those first big revenue streams are pretty strong, hitting the high teens and the twenties on the collections. If we look at our utilities, the telephone and the electric, little bit slightly below the 17% of the year that extended, most likely due to some unemployment issues and people being able to pay their bills. Really hard hit then on our last few categories there, the food and beverage, the hotel tax, even the inspections. And those are obviously directly related to the COVID restrictions that were in place during these last three months, last couple months. If we looked at the next graph, we did, I did a comparison across fiscal years, 18 through 21, of those same revenue streams. And you can see the purple bars are the ones for our current fiscal year 21, and those are pretty much in line with the percentages on the previous graph. Last thing I wanted to mention was our cash position. We are still maintaining a consistent unrestricted cash balance of approximately 8 million is the result of those higher collections on those revenue streams, as well as our monitoring of our expenses. So at this point, we have not had to dip into any reserves. The next couple months, when these revenue streams start to feel the impact of the COVID closures and in-place restrictions, we're going to probably start to see some of those dropping, some of the cash balance dropping a little bit. But we do have our reserves in place. We are set to move forward over the next several many months, and so at this point, we're in a good position. So I'd like to open it up. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try and answer here or follow up as needed.
This is Alderman Quinn. I have a question.
Go ahead.
On page 18 shows that, on the tourism fund, only two of the hotels have, we've received from two of the hotels, and it said the other ones are past due. What's the reason that they're past due versus these smaller hotels?
So Kathy, the bigger hotels, we pay about 15, 16, 18,000, and really, from what I've spoken to them, it's their cash flow. They are just trying to struggle to pay what they need to pay and have not paid us. And so as a result of that, we are not paying really any bills except third-party vendors. We haven't paid out any hotel distributions, grant distributions, but likewise, we also haven't paid ourselves for the police services and the administrative fees.
Have they committed to when they would be getting those funds to us?
I had asked them for a projected budget. They're putting their numbers together, so at that, so I still haven't gotten their final results back. And I'm specifically talking about the Crown and the Hilton.
Yeah, me too. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Please state your name first. All right, I do have a question, Sheri. On the liquor license revenue, where does that go when it comes in?
The liquor license revenue you'll find on, looking for the page, you'll find it on the Detail Revenue and Expense Report, page two. So if you want to go down a little bit further, page two, further, it's the attachment to this narrative document.
All right. The thing I'd like to report is that we're down to maybe, Karen, you can help me, five people that have not paid.
Five companies.
We gave them until July 31, if you recall, and there's five companies outstanding. Overall, that's pretty darn good. So, and we expect to get at least those five to come in within the next few days. That's their promise, and I think they'll hold to it. All right, any other questions for Sheri? All right, Joe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, quick question for Sheri. This is Alderman Ludwitzson. Do the hotels, and forgive me if it's there and I just don't see it, but do they submit their, do they submit their tax as far as a report and just don't fund it? Or do we not know how much occupancy they've had?
I do know we did get their reports up through April, May, but yes, that is the plan. We did ask for the reports. I could send you, if you'd like, the list of what the reported numbers are, even though we haven't made the collection, if you'd like.
Yes, if you can, thank you.
I just don't know those off the top of my head, but I'll send it out. Sure. Thanks.
All right, anyone else speak up? All right, thank you very much. Good job. Things are going well. To have the 8 million unallocated, that's a nice number. Joe, let's move back to item five. I think we skipped over it. Staff elected officials and commission reports.
Yes, sir. Or we still have five C, which is item on the agenda, follow-up about recreational equipment, whichever you prefer, Mr. Mayor.
Well, let's do the, you're right, let's finish that.
Okay.
Just to set this up, this is about a month ago, we discussed this at the city council
meeting. I want to thank council member Morgan Adams for bringing this up to our attention. A few residents of her ward contacted her, and what we found is there's, within the city code, there's a prohibition against tire swing sets, as well as basketball hoops, and a few other things that are commonly found in the front yards of residential neighborhoods. So from that meeting from about a month ago, council member Adams asked if the city staff could do a report and recommendation regarding this issue, and since that time, Dan Peterson and Mike Porzicki have surveyed the community, and they've got some interesting information as well as a recommendation how to proceed tonight. So at that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Thank you very much, Administrator Wade, City Council. Before you, in our report, Inspector Porzicki did a drive-through the entire town and tallied all the recreational equipment that was found in front yards. And as you can see, a lot of them are things you would expect to see. Basketball nets, portable hockey soccer, some swings. We don't want to see the big manufactured play forts or play sets, but there are some. And where the issue comes is when the city code was first written, there was an outright ban on recreational equipment in front yards. And there was no definitions of what constituted recreational equipment. So what we're proposing, because this has really been a non-issue during my five years here, we maybe get one or two complaints in a year, but generally, it's a non-issue. So with COVID, we got a lot more complaints. It became obvious that this was an issue. However, we don't want to prohibit kids from playing on their driveways or in their front yards and putting their nets away at the end of the day. So what we're proposing is to amend the zoning code under that recreational equipment table to allow portable nets, goals, lacrosse-type things that can be taken in and out of a garage or backyard easily. Tire swings are, a single swing in a tree, because that's not a constructed play set or play fort in the front yard. And then we do want to allow basketball hoops and nets in the front yard on the driveways. And these can be either portable or permanently mounted. We did survey a number of municipalities to see what their ordinances were, and most towns don't address the issue. However, Wheeling did on the basketball hoops, and the main reason was to keep it far enough back from the front lot line, so if a basketball got loose or something, it didn't go rolling out into the street, and there was room, you know, safety measure. And then Lake Zurich defined play structures as accessory structures, and if we follow our own code, accessory structures are not permitted in front yards. We are recommending those additions, and then with a setback of 20 feet from the lot line, because we have the larger right-of-ways in our single-family districts, and that would equate to about 35 feet setback from the roadway, which is an ample safe distance should a ball bounce, and kids can look and cars can see people in the front for safety. So with that, staff is seeking council's direction to prepare an application and send this to the zoning code next month for a simple text amendment, which would allow these types of pieces of equipment to be legal as we go forward. With that, I'm open for any questions.
State your name and state your question, please.
Dan, this is Pat. Is the ordinance going to be written that the city may restrict you from putting that in there, or it shall? I mean, is it, is this something that if it's not an issue, I hate to create issues, just to have issues to go enforce. If it's not an issue, is it something that the city has a right to enforce? Or is it something that it's mandatory?
The reason that we're bringing this forward is when the complainant has your code and says recreational equipment is prohibited, and there is no may or shall or that, we're put in a position to enforce the code. And that's what brought the situation to the council level to begin with, is because we were backed into a corner of having to enforce our own code because it didn't give us the leeway. This here allows for these uses, which have not been a problem, and it still gives us the authority on those other pieces of equipment to have a sound enforceable regulation should it, should we get a complaint.
Okay, and will basketball nets exist already, as long as they're not a obvious hazard? If they're permanently placed, will they be grandfathered going forward?
Yes, they'll be considered legal, and if they happen to be closer than the 20 feet, which I don't think there are any, they would be legal non-conforming. So therefore, we're not asking any of our folks that have them in to make any changes at this time, and anybody who does want to put some in has to keep it back 20 feet from their front property line.
No requirement to notify us, they just have to follow that, correct?
They just have to follow that. We're not asking for another level of permits. We're not asking for another level of bureaucratic paperwork. We just want to have people enjoy themselves in their front yard, recreate, and be as safe as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is Alderman Dolick. I just wanted to make a comment that I think what's being proposed here is very reasonable, and I would, I would support it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. So this will come out as a resolution and ordinance next time, Dan?
We will submit an application to TZBA, which will have a brief public hearing on it on August 27, and you guys will see it again at the first meeting in September in the form of an ordinance for a text amendment.
All right. Okay, thank you. Joe?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, wherever you would like to start, as far as council member or staff reports.
Well, I'd love to go non-alphabetical, so I'd like to go to the Alderman first. Michelle Cameron, please. Ward one.
Hi, Mayor. I don't, I don't, hi, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
I don't have anything today, thank you.
All right. Alderman Quinn, Ward two.
Hi, no report today.
All right, good. Alderman, who's next? All right, good. Alderman, who's next here? Morgan Adams. Wendy Morgan Adams, as a matter of fact, Ward three.
Yes, just, just wanted to note that last week that Governor Pritzker listened to all of us at the, at the Illinois Municipal Legislative Committee and League and split the suburbs into 11 public health districts, which helped to distinguish each, each unit with respect to issues that come up with respect to the virus surge. And it was a letter that we voted on in the council meeting to have the governor do. And I'm very happy to see that the governor took the request and recommendations of the various cities and towns who requested it so that we can not be lumped with the city of Chicago and be able to be judged by our own situation in our own suburban districts.
All right, that's really positive. Was someone speaking, please? All right, moving on to Ward, Ward four, Alderman Ludwicksen.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Dolik, Ward five.
I have no report, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer Tibbetts, are you available behind the curtain? Alive? All right, we'll come back to you. City Clerk, Prasand.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to everyone. I just wanted to say that the staff and I have been working on some preliminary updates. Thank you to the staff, to our business link on the Prospect Heights website. We're still in preliminary stages, but we're almost complete in devising better categories so we can do a better search option so they're easily seen, I should say found. And we're just updating the business information themselves. And as a reminder, the, our latest newsletter actually shows the different sections of our surrounding communities where some of the businesses are not located in Prospect Heights, but they are indeed Prospect Heights businesses. So that's a great reminder and thank you for that. And then one more thing, in the beginning of the first quarter, I did mention about a property tax rebate. We will have that in the newsletter coming up. And it is for, it's a program that can abate up to 100% of a surviving spouse, Cook County and city property tax liability. So the program serves surviving spouses of a fallen police officer, soldier, or rescue worker. I don't know if we still have applications for that, additional copies, but if we do not, it says here in the letter to contact Michael Richards and his number is at 312-603-5542. And we should, everyone can get more information that way. So that was the reminder. So thank you, Mayor. That's all I have is my report.
Thank you. Let me remind you, whoever's whispering in the background, we can hear every word you're saying. So please put, Mark Polier from the Deputy Chief Police Department. Mark, are you available? All right, if he finds his button, he can come back in.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, there you are.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right. I just want to remind everybody that's listening on the call that if they have not filled out their census information, to please do so. It's really important to the city and it's something that's required basically by the federal government. So we would certainly encourage everybody to get done, as early as possible. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, I presume this is City Treasurer Tibbetts, is that correct?
That's correct. Yep, yep, that's me.
Have we found Mark yet? Mark, are you available?
Yeah, Mayor, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Yes, there's nothing to report from the police department.
Okay, thank you very much. Joe Wade, Chief Administrator.
Yes, sir, thank you. Two items, just to call out. Thank you Treasurer Tibbetts for attention to the census. And I'm going to ask Peter Falcone to also talk about some of the changes we've made because of COVID-19 on our census outreach effort. But the one item I have for you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the council, is when we scheduled meetings at the start of the year, we did not include August 10th. Traditionally, that's the time we do a break, as many towns do, for, for summer vacations. It's an open question if City Council and you would like to schedule a meeting, we can do a special meeting. It's up to you.
Well, I'd like to continue with what we've done for years and years and, and be off for that week. That's my desire. Anybody from the council want to comment? State your name and tell me what you'd like to say. All right, I think it gives, it gives good family time, even though most of us are locked in the house anyway. But I think to carry it on would be proper and good and fun.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor, this is John O'Driscoll. May, may I just remind the council that there is a, an application before you from Crown Castle today? And there was discussion about having that voted on on August 10th.
Dan, you were next on the list, but I'm glad you got in first. So what do we have to do? Read it and approve it or what's going on?
Well, today would be the first reading and then the vote would be on August 10th if we proceed.
Yeah, we do have the first reading today, you're right. Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Public Works, Director Roscoe.
Yes, sir, good evening. Real quick report. In the last few weeks, it's been nice and dry. Our crews have been doing a lot of work rotting and cammering out some of our stormwater systems, clearing out areas that have traditionally have trouble when we have the big heavy rains. One of them is the Kennelworth Lane or Kennelworth Avenue, which is the south end of the District 23 property near Schoenbeck. Spent a lot of time over there. And on the east side, along Old Willow and also Wheeling Road near Owen, Clarendon and Old Willow Road there. So we've made a lot of progress this time of year. Traditionally, the pipes are dry and we can get in there and really camera and see what's going on. So there's been a lot of activity in that nature. Other than that, sir, no other report?
Good report. Flooding and drainage are big problems and you're on top of it. That's good news. Building developments, Dan Peterson.
Couple of things to report. First of all, construction on the remodeling of the Prospect Heights Plaza at Camp and Elmer's is moving along well on their remodeling, they're rebuilding new facade. We do have a tenant that is slated to come into the corner space where Dom IT was and that's Garfield Liquor. They've got, there'll be a formal application for liquor license on the next council agenda. They did pass their background and approvals with the police department. So we're looking forward to that so they can have the licenses and get started when their remodeling, as the remodeling progresses. Additionally, we've got interest in expansion of sports wagering at the OTB at Players Pub by Hawthorne Racecourse. And we are looking at moving that forward. This would be additional revenue to the city through the Sports Wagering Act that just became law this year. Trying to, we'll see what we can do to get that moving quickly. Additionally, last week at the Planning Zoning Board of Appeals, the new restaurant, proposed restaurant Park Local received the 50 approval, recommended to move forward for a sit-down restaurant with outdoor seating, which is also slated to come forward next month for ordinance of a special use. So those are some new business opportunities that are coming our way along with everything else that we've been going. So it continues to be a good busy summer for the building department and development. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Joe, where are we?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, this is Alderman Dolik. I just had a quick question, sir.
Yes, sir.
It seemed like it wasn't really finalized. Are we having a meeting on August 10th?
No.
Well, well, the city attorney said that we needed to finalize the issue with Crown Castle.
All right, we won't be meeting in August. So whatever it is, that's not something we made up.
Oh, I'm not saying that. I just wasn't sure if we would require a meeting to finalize that.
I don't want them to take it that way either. John, what's your comment?
If we are able, and I think Mr. Camalucci is on the, the line here. I believe there was discussion about having the second reading on the 10th of August.
Mr. Mayor, this is Alderman Ludwicksen. We have never gone a whole month without a meeting. We've, we've left off the last meeting in August. So I'm confused about missing the first meeting. There should be the first meeting of August. Is everybody else agreeing with that?
Yes, and then, and then take the break on August 24th.
Correct.
Well, we had that first meeting on the 10th and then we're done till the 24th, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. Thank you.
But I'll get there, August 10th hearing. But that's not what we've done in the past. First week, we've always taken off. And the second meeting was at the end of the month. Let's see if we can figure that out. Right now, that's the way we've been doing it. You're right, we never had two meetings missed, just one. Alderman, so I don't know what to say. Let me think about it. Give me some advice when you can.
Well, I, I, maybe just let's take a poll. I think we should have that meeting on August 10th.
This is Alderman Morgan Adams. So are we saying we will not have the meeting on August 24th then? Or we're going to have it on the 24th and not on the 10th?
Yeah, we need, this is Alderman Ludwicksen, yeah, we need to have a meeting in August. I'm not opposed to, but if everybody wants to be off one meeting, seems like it has to be the 24th.
All right.
I would be fine with, I'm sorry, sir, I would be fine with that too. But the 10th is coming up in just a few weeks, so I think we should decide tonight. But I would be fine with meeting on the 10th and taking the 24th off. That would still give us a break to be with family or whatever.
Yes. Well, what would we like to do? Get direction to?
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Alderman Quinn. Can Joe, can Joe Wade perhaps, or Karen, tell us what was done in the previous year regarding that August month?
Well, we, we are scheduled to have a meeting August 24th.
Right now.
Right now, but we, we have, in the past, we've also had special meetings when we needed them.
So for the years that I can remember, eight or nine for certainly, we've taken, you know, the first week in August, basically. Sometimes it overlaps into the second week. But, yeah, we, we could, we could stay for the 10th and, August 10th and then be off at the end of the month. If anyone has any comment on that, please say your name, give us your comment. Alderman Dolik already thought that wasn't a bad idea and I don't think it's a bad idea either. Amazing silence in the room. Joe?
Yeah, I'm good with it. Let's have a straw poll, I guess, if you want me to. I'll take this over. All those in favor of having a meeting on the 10th? I am. Anybody else?
I.
I am.
Hi, Cameron.
This is a straw poll now and I believe, who else is left? Morgan Adams?
But I'll obviously go with the rest. It's Quinn.
Okay, and who has not said anything? Wendy, you said something?
I said I was fine with, with doing that.
All right, so now, how do we get it done? You know, changing dates is like confusion.
Send out notice, Mayor.
What's that?
City Administrator Wade will be able to send out notice.
All right, and let's, everybody in favor of that. Do we need more than that or can we just tell them to do it or what?
You can just tell them to do it, so.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have direction. We'll, we'll take care of it.
Good, good job, going, glad you piped in. Good, everybody's good. Where are we on the agenda, Joe?
Let's see, Peter Falcone, your report?
Unmute. Thank you Administrator Wade. Mr. Wa, Mayor, can you hear me?
I can, yes, thank you.
Fantastic. As Administrator Wade alluded to, the city's efforts in increasing our census participation have been muted a little bit because of the coronavirus. So we've kind of had a shift on the fly. Unfortunately, I, as I reported to the council earlier, about a week ago, all the players involved, the September 12th block party, census block party, agreed that it was too risky to continue with the event, so the event was canceled. What we did decide to do though is still partner with the libraries and the parks to have smaller events that would fall underneath Governor Pritzker's guidelines for safety. So I've been in communication with the park district and the libraries and they're, they're all on board. Some of the events that are going to take place, we're going to have some drive-in movies where people can go to the park and sit in their car and watch a movie. We're also going to have a, a drive-in concert. We're talking about an art contest that's going to be a census scene. Nothing's been finalized yet and as soon as those dates and the different events are finalized, I will get that information out, not only to the council, but to the public through all of our, our media resources. End of report, sir.
And Mayor, I'd just like to add to that. We, we wouldn't be able to do this without the, the great help and cooperation of our governmental partners, both park districts, the library, they, both libraries, actually. They've, they've really stepped up and, and they're helping us out greatly.
Also, I'd like to, to echo that, but the main, the main reason why we're having these is through the generosity of a census grant that we're getting through Cook County. So this is being funded through Cook County Census Outreach Grant. So I'd like to thank Cook County as well for the, their financial support.
All right, good. I think I went through the whole list. My comment is a quickie. I'd like to see Dan and John, this thing with Players Pub somehow to get it done. Because right now, the timing for dates, Dan advises me, pushes it, how, how, how deep, Dan? How far off would it be if, if, if?
If we were to follow our regular Planning Zoning Board of Appeals timeframe, they, this wouldn't be heard until August 27th and then be in front of the council until the and then be in front of the council until the first council meeting in September. Hawthorne has a request to try and get this on um by middle of August, which I'm, even if we tried to do a zoning, a special meeting of the zoning board, which I don't, haven't even broached the subject with them yet. Um, cause we had, it, this has all come pretty quickly. Um, it it wouldn't be until the 17th, the week of the August 17th. So um we are on a tight timeframe. Uh, Attorney O'Driscoll and I started communications about this today as this information came forward. Um, we did not know the timing of this when this first all came about a week or so ago, but we're gonna do what we can to move this forward.
Well, apparently, and Jen, I'll get to you in a second, uh, they will lose a month's operation. Uh, their dead uh their dead date is the 18th of August. So uh and then they have to wait, uh, and it looks like uh, you know, it'd be tough to help them. But John, what's your comment?
Yeah, we we started talking about this about an hour before this meeting, so um Dan and I and and Joe put our heads together and figure out, see what we can do to uh to get this going.
Well, well, as I said, uh, these people are anxious, anxious to provide income to themselves and of course to the city also. And it's a fairly uh, you know, you see these ads on TV where you can now bet on football games, baseball games, and everything else. I think this is a simple text amendment, isn't it, John? Two sentences or something? Cause they already have. Yeah, me.
Yeah, sir, this is Director Peterson. Um, it it is a fairly straightforward amendment to uh our definitions. However, as it is a text amendment, it does require a public hearing process. So we're just trying to figure out how to make this thing work as quickly as possible, understanding that um at the end of the day, it really doesn't change totally the, their operations. They're still a wagering place for the parameter on horse horses. Um, so it's just another form of that at their existing place. So we'll do what we can as quickly as we can.
Well, let's not be cavalier about this. Of course, they could do that. But uh, you know, you sell hamburgers, you sell 10 a week, and then you have the opportunity to sell 50 a week. Uh, I think uh you wouldn't treat it lightly. So you guys are looking into it. Keep me advised and anyone else that has an interest in it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, can you, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, this is Treasurer Tibbetts. Uh, can I make a comment? Sir?
Yeah, I just unmuted. Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that the previous topic, that in the the previous two years, in 2018, we held a meeting in August on the 27th, and then in 2019, the meeting was on the 26th. I just looked it up.
Well, what's your point?
I was just confirming that we held meetings at this last meeting of August in the previous two years.
Yeah, well, I I think even before that, I I don't remember not having that second meeting. I do remember having the first week off uh to enjoy.
You're incorrect, you're correct.
Yeah. Alright, where are we, Joe?
Mayor, I believe that uh has completed our reports for the night, uh, which would bring us to old business. And item 6A is second reading of an ordinance directing the sale of surplus property. It's a public works vehicle, 1999 Ford. Uh, this is the Ariel truck, the bucket truck.
Does anybody buy stuff like that?
Oh, yes, sir, they do. Uh, we uh, we put it in auction, uh, and we do find a market for it. It's uh, it's obsolete to us. Uh, it's it's aged, uh, but somebody else may have used for it or even just for parts.
Alright, well, let's move on, and this is the second reading, so uh let's have a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion. We have a second to sell the item described. Uh, any other comments? If not, take a roll call, please. City Clerk.
Yes, I'm sorry, unmuted. Uh, Alderman Ludvixson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item B, Joe?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensary organization at 1434 North Rand Road. This is for the Zen Leaf Store, uh, and it is uh again, it's second reading.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve? Uh, as a second meeting, I am.
So move, Morgan.
We have a motion. We have a second, please.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion on the issue? Alright, City Clerk, please uh tally the votes.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvixson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Back to you, Joe.
Uh, thank you. Item seven is new business. And item A, this is uh sponsored by Alderman Dolik and Ludvixson. Uh, it's a resolution rescinding Resolution R 20 dash 17, which was a resolution authorizing home rule referendum to be placed on the November 6th ballot. And not to speak for them, uh, but uh it reflects, I think, some reservations and some reconsideration based on the timing of this because of the COVID pandemic.
Alright, um
Motion to approve?
Motion approved. We have it from Alderman Dolik. A second, please.
Second.
We have a second. Uh, any further discussion on this issue? If not, roll call, please.
I was just gonna say, uh, if I could, if I could just make a brief comment, this is Alderman Dolik. Um, I don't want to repeat everything that uh Joe just said, but I just wanted to um explain my viewpoint on this. I think it is just a matter of timing. Uh, it's not the right time, in my opinion. It's not that I am against home rule, uh, but I think with the COVID-19 uh situation, our uh economic downturn among residents here, uh, we've got um the census that we're working on. Um, and I just want to mention that I have great respect for uh Chairman uh Rich Tibbetts, um, and his efforts with this. Uh, I appreciate all of that. I think it's just a matter of it being a bad time, uh, just not the right time, in my opinion. And I just wanted to uh explain my viewpoint on this.
Alright, anyone else want to have a comment? Alright, you're being none, and we don't vote on this issue as far as I could see. It's just a removal. What do we need for that, uh, Joe?
Uh, this would be a vote. We would need a roll call vote.
A roll call vote, okay, so there's no first or second, it's just a roll call vote. Let's have that.
Actually, excuse me, if I could just ask a a point of clarification from, I guess, the uh, from Mr. O'Driscoll. I just want to be clear, a yes vote means that we are removing this from the ballot in November. A no vote would re, have it remain on the ballot. Is that correct?
Uh, a yes vote is uh in favor of not having the home rule item on the ballot.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to be clear before uh we take a roll call. Thank you.
Alright, City Clerk, please take your roll call.
Okay. Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Ludvixson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, it will be removed. I I'm sorry, five zero. It will be removed. Okay.
Item 7B is consideration of the Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation regarding the special use request of Crown Castle for telecommunications tower at 10 East Camp McDonald Road. And with us through the Zoom meeting tonight is uh Carl Camalucci of the Taft Law Firm. Uh, also Director Peterson, if there's anything else you'd like to add in introducing this agenda item.
Uh, thank you, Administrator Wade. Um, last Thursday night, the uh Planning Zoning Board of Appeals um had at the regular meeting um cons- reopened the public hearing on Case 20 dash 02 SU for Crown Castle. Um, this, as you know, was remanded back by the uh council in March for further consideration, uh, establishment of the record. Uh, additionally, um, the applicant, there was some possibility that they were going to be seeking a variation for height due to the existing height of the tower, which is non-conforming. However, the applicant was able to confirm that their height would meet the original 1998 height limit of 110 feet uh and be within their lease area, so the uh variation for being within 500 feet to residential still applied with the land as was outlined in my memo. Um, there was considerable discussion by Mr. uh Camalucci and uh Mr. uh Travis Shank from Crown Castle and uh regoing over the uh testimony and also introducing a new uh, the monopole with uh exterior mounted racks as an alternat- alternative to the monopine. Uh, with that, the council or the PZBA recommended um two to three not to support a positive recommendation of the monopole and a one to four not to support a recommendation for the monopine. And tonight's a first reading. Mr. Camalucci is here representing Crown Castle, um, and that's where we stand.
Alright, so item B is a resolution, and item C is the same resolution but a different pole. Item uh B is a monopine, so uh, and these are first readings. So let's be sure we know what we're talking about, and uh let's uh if you want to discuss it. So let's uh say item B, uh, first of all, uh, motion to approve doesn't mean you approve it. It means you get the chance to discuss it. So motion to approve, please.
There there is no motion to approve. This is a first reading.
Right, thank you. Alright, comments on uh, what do you want to do, Mr. Ludvixson? You seem to be the expert on this one, and I defer to you. Uh, what is the next step?
Just a lot of years of experience, Nick. Um, no, I I don't uh, I don't, I don't have any questions about the project itself. Mine is more to the, to the city attorney about the uh, the technical part of the ZBA voting it down. Does that change what we have to do or what we're allowed to do or required to do with our vote?
Right, so when you are dealing with a situation where the PZBA has voted it down, then you need a three-fifths majority to approve it. If you seek to approve it.
And I know we use that term three-fifths a lot, and, you know, I like simple math. I know we have five Aldermen. Three-fifths is considered just a standard majority, or is that a super majority?
That would be, uh, that would be, if we'll five of you here, that would be a a simple majority.
Okay, thanks.
And I, further, Mr. Mayor, um, I believe Mr. Camalucci has prepared a slideshow for you.
Hard to see through my binoculars here, but go ahead. I mean, is there someone there to watch it, is what my question is?
Yes.
Some of the people, some of the people are on TV, is that true? Or the computer or whatever?
Yeah, we have our computer on.
Alright, uh, how long's the uh, how long's the presentation?
Mr. Camalucci, would you like to advise?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. This is Carl Camalucci from the Taft Law Firm, um, representing Crown Castle. Thanks for the opportunity to be with you tonight. Um, we we just thought it would be helpful to take the opportunity to, because this item has been before the city for some time, to uh review uh some of the history and then to provide you with some updates um, uh, to to assist you in your consideration of the item. And before I begin, I I just wanted to thank the city council and the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals uh and city staff for um, um facilitating um the the hearing last Thursday and the meeting tonight. We understand that it's very difficult to hold public meetings and hearings uh in the COVID-19 era. It takes a lot of work. Um, it's very time-consuming, and we do appreciate all that effort. I'll I'll be bri- I'll I'll do my best to be brief tonight because I know that you're all familiar with with much of this. But, you know, we do want to say that uh in general, Crown Castle's approach to these applications is to uh build constructive relationships with um, with the communities in which its facilities exist. And one of the ways that it tries to do that is to uh respond to the concerns of applicants uh of of the of the uh public. I'm sorry, I just lost my Zoom connection. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm back now. Um, a- and I think the history of this application, um and I, I think I was muted for a second there. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the history of this application demonstrates um Crown Castle's approach. So um, the first application was actually filed back in, uh, I'm looking at page four now of the slide deck, Patrick, uh, for those of you who are following along, um, in March 25th, 2019. And there were hearings in April and May of 2019 regarding that application. And the first application proposed a monopole. And there were concerns expressed by members of the community and the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the aesthetics of the monopole and the antennas. So in response to those concerns and at the suggestion of the PZBA, Crown withdrew its application and attempted to redesign the pole in a, in a way that attempted to uh address those concerns. Um, Crown then came back, uh, moving to page five of the presentation um with its second application, which was filed December 23rd, 2019. Uh, and that application um was heard by the So I'm not sure where I cut out, but um I was just saying that there was a second application filed after the the initial application was filed. Um, there were, there were concerns about the aesthetics of the monopole with respect to the first application. So Crown filed its second application, um, proposing a monopine design, which was an effort to address concerns about the appearance of the monopole. Uh, that was, went through the process and was heard by the PZBA on January 23rd, 2020. Uh, this city council considered it March 9th. Um, and of course, it was referred, referred back to the uh PZBA, um, when we had the hearing last week on Thursday. Uh, during the course of that process, um, some members of the public and of the PZBA and the council expressed concern about height pole all in, which complies with the underlying special use permit, existing special use permit and the um uh and the variations granted uh pursuant to that special use permit. And um, we also heard throughout that process that um some people actually may have preferred the appearance of the appearance of the monopole to the monopine. And so at last week's hearing, Crown offered to build either alternative, the monopine or the monopole, and showed plans and presented plans for both options. And that takes us to today's meeting, which is July 27th, of course. The next slide, oops, we skip ahead to the, before we get to these pictures of the polls, I just want to review some of the things that are in the record before last week's hearing. Those things remain in the record. The hearing was just reopened and supplemented, it was not, the other materials are still part of the record. Patrick, if you're trying to figure out what page we're on, we're on page six, please. Much of the presentation and evidence from the previous PZBA hearing and City Council meeting remains relevant. First and foremost, there's still coverage gaps in this area, and we have coverage maps from various carriers as well as affidavit and testimony from a property engineer demonstrating that there's coverage gaps without a tower that could include additional wireless facilities. And we also have evidence in the record already that a tower will improve the coverage and the gaps. Moving to page seven, this just illustrates the coverage gap and how an additional tower can address the gap. If there's too much space between sites, it leaves gaps. Moving to slide eight, Patrick, if you add a new tower in between, it helps fill in the gap where the signals weren't reaching before, and that's what we're proposing to do here by having a replacement tower that can handle additional carriers and provide additional coverage to fill in the gap. Another thing that's in the record from the previous hearings that remains relevant is that this property, the only viable location where new antennas can address the coverage gaps. The city has very few locations for towers, and that contributes to the reason why this is the only viable location. Patrick, if we move to slide 10, this aerial view shows, you know, the area around the existing tower and where the proposed tower would also be located. It's almost fully developed or entirely developed, most of which is single-family homes. It's obviously not appropriate to put a tower anywhere where there's single-family homes existing. And the commercial area around the existing location, you know, doesn't have a lot of opportunities for an additional facility. In the last public hearing at City Council meeting, Crown testified that it had approached other property owners in the area to see if it could enter into a lease to pursue one of those locations, and that had been unsuccessful. And so that left the existing location where it already has a lease in place as the only feasible way to fill the coverage gap. If we move to the next slide, Patrick, slide 11, we have a picture of the zoning map which further illustrates that the existing location is the only feasible location to fill the coverage gap. The red circle in the center of the zoning map is the proposed location. The black circles around the perimeter are, sorry, I just got kicked down again and I just, I just brought myself off view, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Patrick, we're on page 11. The black circles around the periphery of the center show other existing towers, and this just illustrates that if you wanted to fill the gap, you kind of have to be in the middle there somewhere, and this is one of the only places where one could put a tower. Moving on to slide 12, Patrick, even if another location were viable, expanding at the existing location would reduce the proliferation of towers compared to building in a new location in addition to the existing location. So this is just to suggest that, you know, in order to reduce the impact of wireless facilities in the community, having three facilities co-located on a single existing pole actually has less of an impact than having three poles with three separate antennas. And this is actually consistent with the approach taken in the city zoning code, which encourages the co-location of antennas by requiring at least three carriers to share each power. I can't tell if you can, if I'm still with you or not, but I assume I am since nobody has said they can't hear me.
You are.
Thank you. Moving to slide 13, this is just a review of some things we've discussed in the past regarding the requirements of the Telecommunications Act of 1996. I apologize to the Council for the technical issues, I don't know what's happening, I'm connected and then I disconnect and then I have trouble coming back on, but hopefully we'll be able to continue without further interruption. Thank you for your patience. I was just going over on slide 13.
We lost you at the beginning of the act.
I'm sorry?
We lost you at the beginning of your description of the act.
Thank you. I was just beginning to talk about the provision of the act that states that local authorities may not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services, which means that basically you can't discriminate between different wireless carriers. And there's been case law that says that when there's a proposal to co-locate additional carriers in a location after an existing carrier has been at that location, that denying that application can unreasonably discriminate against the other carriers. Another element of the Telecommunications Act states that local authorities cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. And there's case law in the Seventh Circuit where Illinois has located that states that if there's a coverage gap and a location is the only feasible alternative to address the coverage gap, that that can effectively prohibit the provision of wireless services. Finally, there's a provision of the act which states that no state or local, test? Okay, I understand that I'm back, I don't know where I cut out, but I'm going to move forward to the next slide because this is not, this is not our focus of the presentation. The next slide, where we really want to focus is on page 14, which has to do with updates to the application. As we mentioned before, you know, in response to both the City Council's and the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals' requests regarding height, Crown designed the tower 110 feet including the lightning rod so that a no-height location is required and the City Council and the tower can be built in accordance with the existing special use permit and variations. Additionally, Crown would like to allow the PZBA and the City Council to consider both the monopole design and the monopine design because over the course of this process, it appeared that perhaps the monopole would be a preferable option, and so plans for both alternatives are now included. And we've also updated the plans to show that the antennas and platforms that will be located on the tower will be entirely within the lease premises because there is some concern that some of them may go over the line of the lease premises. And we're about to go look at those plans, beginning with slide 15. Am I still with you?
Yes.
Thank you. Before I discuss these, I just want to address a comment that came up at the PZBA meeting that you may have heard about. There is some suggestion during the PZBA meeting that these may not be to scale, and we confirmed with the engineer who prepared the plans that they are indeed to scale. However, viewing the plans in certain page sizes or through certain media can distort the image so that they may not appear to be to scale. We provided an email from the engineer to that effect to the city, and I understand that it's been provided to members of the City Council through your Dropbox. If you haven't seen it already, I just wanted to point it to your attention. So these plans were prepared to scale, but depending on what size paper you're looking at or what viewer you're using, they may be a little distorted. This slide here, slide 15, shows the first design alternative. On the left-hand side of the screen is the existing pole, and on the right-hand side of the screen is the proposed monopine design. And again, this shows 110 feet all-in, which is actually two feet shorter than the existing pole, and it shows the top diameter of the pole and the bottom diameter of the pole because that information had been requested previously. If we move on to the next slide, Patrick, here we have the second design alternative. Again, on the left-hand side is the existing pole, and on the right-hand side is the proposed monopole design, again 110 feet, two feet shorter, and again you can see the dimensions at the top of the pole and the bottom of the pole for reference. Now, Patrick, if we could move to the next slide, please. Oops, one back, yeah, thank you. This is an overhead site plan of the site, and it shows, you can see a triangle that's been superimposed over the pole. That triangle is intended to show that the largest possible standard arrays, which would be each side of the triangle 12 feet, would all fit within the lease premises. At this time, because the carriers prepared the designs for the antenna arrays, and they've not prepared their designs because they're not sure yet whether this pole will be a location that they can use, we do not have final designs of each carrier's array. In addition, each carrier uses its own technology, and so each of its antenna arrays are a little bit different. However, we know that using this 12-foot-by-12-foot-by-12-foot triangle is the largest that it could be, and the actual dimensions may differ, and if they differed, would be smaller. Patrick, if you could please go to the next slide. Thank you. We wanted to say a few words about the health effects of wireless facilities, only because the topic came up persistently at the PZBA level and in the City Council meeting. It was mentioned by both members of the public who objected to the tower as well as certain members of the PZBA and the City Council. Scientific consensus after 60 years of study is that there's no evidence that radio frequency emissions within FCC limits cause any negative health effects. And of course, this tower would be operated well within FCC limits. This research is always being reviewed by different regulators and scientists. In fact, we provided, in the package of materials supplementing the application in connection with the hearing last week, three written materials that should have been the materials shared with the City Council prior to this meeting. Two of them were articles, one from the New York Times and one from Wired, and the third was a fact sheet. I think both of the articles did a pretty good job of illustrating that there were a couple of theories that led to a lot of misconceptions and concerns about the health effects, but those theories have since been debunked. In fact, many common appliances and devices that we use in our everyday lives emit electromagnetic energy that's very similar to wireless technology. This slide illustrates sort of the continuum of electromagnetic energy that is emitted by these types of devices, and you can see on the left-hand side, you have regular electricity, you've got televisions and monitors and radios, and then you've got a wireless facility and followed by cell phones, microwaves, satellites, toasters, all the way up to the light bulb. And not only, not until you get to the far right of the spectrum do you get things like x-rays. So, you know, we think this helps contextualize the type of energy that's emitted by these facilities, and we hope that it gives the City Council greater comfort with respect to those issues, given that they've been discussed in great detail at previous meetings. Patrick, if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. And so last thing I want to do is just focus a little bit on the special use standards. You know, the existing tower has already been granted a special use permit, and I think it's important to note that special use permits are granted with respect to the use. In this case, the use is a, you know, wireless telecommunications facility. And so the City Council already determined when it granted the existing special use permit that this use satisfies the special use standards, and for that reason, replacement tower does too. It's the same land use on the same property in the same or similar surroundings, it has a reduced height, and for all of these reasons and additional ones I'll discuss in a moment, compared to the existing tower, when you consider the special use standard, the effect of the replacement tower on surrounding property is not materially different. Patrick, if you could please go to the next slide. Thank you. So here, we've just taken each of the standards from section 510-9.e of the zoning code and tried to address them each individually for you. The first standard is that the replacement tower will not be unreasonably detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. And as we just discussed, the replacement tower is not dangerous, just like the existing tower, and so this standard should be satisfied. Second, the replacement tower will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the community for the purposes already permitted, which I think is an important piece of language in that standard, nor diminish property values. So we've taken these one at a time. You know, the replacement tower will not materially affect the right or ability of any property to use his or her property for the same purposes as they already use it for. The property won't prevent anybody from using their yards or any other use that they may have, and I think that's really the purpose of the standard, is to say that it won't inhibit other people from pursuing the uses that they already lawfully pursued on their property. The second piece is property values, and property values, of course, are very difficult to determine in terms of which factors, you know, actually contribute to the value of a property. There's many different factors from location to size of the property, size of the house, the general market conditions and other things. In many ways, the value of the nearby properties of this location already has baked into it the fact that the properties are located near a fire station with an existing wireless communication tower. And so to the extent that people may believe that proximity to a wireless telecommunications tower may have an effect on property value, that's probably already factored in to an extent. In addition, in general, you know, we haven't seen that wireless telecommunications towers decrease property values. You know, the fact of the matter is that these towers are more and more present in various communities and in various locations. One would think that if the towers would be such a significant factor in decreasing property values, that you would see property values declining, you know, in many communities, you know, across the United States as a result of the increased number of these towers, and that simply hasn't been the case. In fact, in general, property values have increased across the United States over the same period of time. It's also important to note that towers provide value to the community as well in the form of good coverage, enhanced safety to assure that there's a connection to 911 and other things, as everybody has more and more devices that need to be connected to wireless networks in order for them to function, not just phones, but not just tablets, but even our ordinary appliances and vehicles and other things, our watches are all connecting. People want to have good coverage, and they get frustrated when they don't have it, and that contributes to value as well. So we think, we think that both parts of factor two have been met, just like with the existing tower. Third, the replacement tower will not impede normal and orderly development for uses permitted in the district. The area is already almost entirely developed, and so, you know, I think it would be almost impossible for it to inhibit development in the area, just like the existing, and the existing tower has not inhibited development, so we think that standard is met. Thank you, Patrick. Number four, that the site has adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other facilities. The plans for the replacement tower include the installation of required utilities and other facilities that are needed for the tower to function, and otherwise it does not require additional, you know, access roads or anything like that. So item four is met, just like the existing tower. Number five has to do with ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion. This use does not generate much traffic, the existing ingress and egress will be adequate, and the use will not contribute to congestion, so. So this factor is satisfied, just like the existing tower. Number six, the special use must conform to the applicable regulations to the district in which it is located, except if such regulations have been modified by the city council. In this case, as we know, there's an existing special use permit that modified some of the applicable regulations of the district, including with respect to height and proximity to other types of uses. And the proposed replacement tower complies with all of those requirements as they have been varied by the existing special use permit variations. And finally, the last standard is that the tower does not lie wholly or partly in a floodplain. It does not, just like the existing tower. So we think all of these standards apply in similar ways to the existing tower as they would to the proposed tower. So just to review, you know, we submit that the tower meets the special use standards. It's the only feasible location to address coverage gaps. It allows co-location of additional carriers and avoids discrimination between carriers. You know, we note that the three-carrier design is consistent with the city's own zoning code. We've got two options for the city council to consider in an attempt to address concerns, as well as no necessary height variation due to the redesigned tower. And so, for all of those reasons, we respectfully request that the city council approve the proposed tower in whichever design alternative the city council prefers. And we appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak with you tonight and I particularly appreciate your patience with the technical difficulties that we had in terms of my connection to Zoom and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there anyone that has questions? If you do, please preface your question by a name and go ahead and speak.
Alderman Ludikson, couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, what was your name again, the attorney?
Carl Camalucci, good evening.
Carl, good evening, Carl. You had said that there was a meeting in March and there was an issue brought up about how the tower looked. Were there other issues or many? There were a lot of issues brought up at that meeting, one of which was the location that you were proposing for the tower. You went through a lot of effort to come up with a new design to make the tower look better aesthetically. Did you spend any time at all about a different location, searching out a different location or re-looking at the locations you looked at prior to March 25th?
Thank you, Alderman. I believe at the last hearing, meaning not the one last, but the one in the spring, Crown testified that it had attempted to contact other property owners of property in the vicinity of this property, because that's the target area for filling the coverage gap, to see if they could come to a lease arrangement with one of those property owners, basically to have a different location. And they were unable to find a match. And so, the only location that was available for Crown to have the replacement tower that adds these additional carriers is at the existing.
I know you're saying that your client researched that, but did they document that with you? Did you have any discussions with them about new locations after March 25th?
Well, I don't think that I can divulge the content of my privileged conversations with our client about potential locations, but I do know that there was sincere effort to find other locations. I don't know the exact timing of when of all those efforts occurred, but Crown did not simply decide to choose this location without first attempting to vet other locations.
Okay. No, I'm asking you the questions, not on behalf of your client, but you specifically. One of the comments you made tonight was that you don't locate towers in residential neighborhoods. You pulled up a map and showed how where it actually sits is not necessarily residential on the footprint, but it's within feet of residential. Can you tell me what you think residential means as far as the neighborhood goes?
Well, just to clarify, we can't locate a tower on a residential property. And so, the only location where there are commercial properties where a tower could potentially be located is within this commercial area, which includes the, you know, the proposed location and includes some other properties in the vicinity of the location. From a zoning perspective, there would be, you know, no possibility of locating a tower on any of the other properties that are zoned, I think most of them are zoned R1. So that's what I meant to say if I didn't say it clearly enough before.
Okay. And if you, this tower you're saying is a problem for your, who is your actual client? Crown Castle, the property or the carrier? I'm confused as to who you represent.
I represent Crown Castle, who is the applicant here. Crown Castle, you know, enters into the lease with the property owner, owns the wireless telecommunications structure, and then leases space on the structure to the carriers. So the carriers are separate participants who I do not represent.
Okay. But every argument you're making so far, talking about FCC and everything else, talks about the carriers, not somebody who owns the property. So are you saying that everything that you're talking about with the FCC regulations applies to property owners in addition to carriers?
No. The Telecommunication Act and the corresponding regulations applies to local authorities, units of local government who regulate the location of wireless telecommunications facilities. And under certain circumstances, it limits the authority to regulate those locations. And those limitations apply when an applicant like Crown Castle proposes to seek a special use permit for a facility if the facility is, if the application is denied for certain unpermitted reasons or has certain types of effect, including unreasonable discrimination between carriers or has the effect of substantially prohibiting service.
You also said by placing this tower here and co-locating other users there, you're going to eliminate the possibility of another tower nearby. Is that the case? Do you agree with that statement?
I don't believe I said it would eliminate the possibility, but it, you know, if you're seeking to co-locate additional wireless carriers, the way to minimize the impact on the community is to have more carriers on a single wireless structure rather than one carrier on multiple structures, because then you're just going to have, you know, two or three structures rather than a single structure.
But you'd have to agree that it's impossible for another pole to be put up close to this pole is what you're saying, right? I mean, you'd agree with that, that that could never happen? Because if you're saying that you can't get another location to do this, obviously nobody else could either, correct?
Well, I can say that when Crown approached property owners to see if they could use one of those other properties for a tower, that they were unsuccessful in, you know, obtaining a lease to the property owners. Whether in the future, some other company would be able to, you know, come to an agreement with those other property owners is something that I can't say for sure, but I guess, you know, based on Crown's experience and based on, you know, the coverage maps that we've seen, if there were a, an expanded replacement tower with additional carriers at this location, it would seem, you know, less likely or that there'd be another tower in this location because there'd be less of a need for it.
Okay. But so then you're saying that, would it be fair to say that financially you couldn't come to an agreement with the other locations? Or are you saying engineering-wise, you couldn't do another location based on the map that you showed?
You know, I don't know the underlying reasons why they couldn't reach agreement. It could have been either of those.
Wait, hold, wait, I don't want to interrupt you, but you are their attorney. You have to have been in a conversation as to why those other locations wouldn't work.
I am their attorney. I'm representing them with respect to this land use matter. I was not involved in the conversations with other property owners. We do have on the line some representatives from Crown who may be able to provide additional information about that, including Travis Schenk. I don't know if he has that information, but he may.
Well, I'm asking you because you're the one doing the presentation now. You're representing to us that there was no other location to put this, that's why you have to put it in the location that you currently have right now. But you won't say that it's impossible for somebody else to put another tower up somewhere else. I mean, to me, that doesn't sound, that doesn't make sense. And if there is the possibility for another tower to go up that would be within your boundaries of necessity, why would somebody else be able to put one up later somewhere else?
Well, Alderman, I can't predict the future and I can't say 100% that, you know, there's other companies that do what Crown does. Can't say 100% that in the future, you know, another company or even Crown might not be able to, you know, come to agreement with another property in the future. But I think that, given what we know about the coverage gaps and the maps and the location of the other towers surrounding this location, if, you know, three carriers were located at this location, then the potential need for another tower in this area seems, you know, less likely and therefore, you know, the likelihood of another tower in this area seems unlikely. If you combine that with the fact that there are almost no other locations where a tower could be built, you know, I feel comfortable saying it's unlikely, but I can't say it's impossible.
No, I'm just trying to clarify you saying that it's unlikely that somebody else will be able to build one and that you did all you could to find another location. Those two just don't seem to, it doesn't make any sense to me. Is there a financial reason why having three locations on your tower and your client's tower is beneficial to them?
I'm not able to answer that question. That's beyond what I know about the towers. I told you what I know.
So three carriers, three carriers on one tower versus one carrier on one tower? As their attorney, you can't say whether or not that's better for them financially? I hope you can. That doesn't make any sense.
Alderman, I'm not familiar with, you know, the rents that are charged at each of the towers. You know, I think you're suggesting that it may be common sense that if you're, you know, if you have three carriers, that the revenue stream off the pole is more than if there's only one carrier. You may be right about that, but I can't say for sure that's, you know, I'm the land use council. I'm not intimately familiar with the business details behind each of the locations. Again, there are folks from the business who are on the line who may be able to address that question. But, you know, from a land use perspective, the reason why the city zoning code requires three antennas to be located on each tower is to reduce the impact of wireless telecommunications facilities on the community by making sure that you have three antennas on one pole rather than three poles with one antenna. So, you know, I'm not going to speculate about what in the future may or may not be possible. I can tell you that Crown attempted to find alternative locations and was unsuccessful in this instance. And it already had a location under a lease where it was able to negotiate a lease amendment that would permit it to install this replacement tower and co-locate three antennas rather than one. And so, it pursued that alternative.
Were you part of the lease negotiations for the expansion of the lease that they have now?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, last question is, you answered the question about not being in a residential area because it's not zoned to have a tower in residential. But what kind of assurances do the people that live underneath the scatter field, if you will, if there was a tornado that came through and blew the paddles off and those things started flying through the air? What kind of assurances do the people there have that these 12-by-12 panels, three of them for each location, aren't going to be flying through their roofs? Is there, do you have a guarantee for them for that?
No, I mean, just like any structure that could be built, whether it's a wireless facility or a building or anything else, you know, if there's a natural disaster that causes, you know, damage to a property, nobody can guarantee that that would not occur. Of course, the structure will be built in a good and working light condition in accordance with all applicable codes and it will be structurally sound in accordance with those codes, but no applicant that comes before the city council for any type of project can make that kind of guarantee, Alderman.
I agree with you, but I don't think we have another applicant that's asked us in years or decades to put something 110 feet above a residential structure. So yours is very unique, so I'm hoping that that's been considered. So if something happens, that that's been taken into account, because your use is very special as you are asking for a special use, I would hope that was considered. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask if you could tell me why the tower couldn't be reduced down to 80 feet as allowed in the city code despite the existing variance?
Thank you, Alderman. There needs to be a certain amount of space between each of the antenna arrays in order to prevent interference between them. And at each location, the radio frequency engineers calculate the heights at which the antennas need to be located in order to effectively fill the gaps. And we had testimony at the previous hearing from the RF engineer to the effect that at this location, a tower at that height, given the spacing that needs to occur between the antennas, would not be sufficient to receive the signal and actually fill the gap. So at this location, the RF engineer testified that, you know, the tower needed to be around this height to allow for that spacing and to allow for the signals to be received and transmitted to the other towers in the area.
Mayor, this is Director Peterson.
Yes, Dan.
Also, at the PZBA hearing in January and last year in April in 2019, it was testified to by both Deputy Chief Tim Jones and Chief Smith that the 110-foot is the required height that the fire department needs to operate their radios for their operations. That's the height that established the 110 feet prior to the 1998 ordinance when they had the radio tower there that was replaced in 1998 and it's still current today. Thus, that's where the 110 came into account originally. Thank you.
Well, Dan, I do have to say that they have a vested interest in having the tower there. They're going to get paid for it. So I'm not sure that it's all one thing or the other, but certainly that is another consideration. I and our former attorney, Mr. Zimmerman, worked on this particular antenna location probably seven or eight years ago. And it was to come to the city as a potential piece of business. And it never did for various reasons. But not only, you know, they have a good point, they can reach their ambulances, let's say, quicker or easier or whatever the word is, but they also have a vested interest. So, you know, not that that's bad, but it isn't, it can be thought of as another, you know, influence on what they say and what they want to get done. So, thank you. Who's next? Anyone, please. Name? All right, I think like we're tired out.
Quinn, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
I can, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Paula McQuinn, are you there?
I am. I have a quick question.
I have a quick question. Um, the attorney mentioned the fact that they followed the FCC for, uh, radiation emissions. So how does that change when you're adding the three, um, you know, the three, um, levels on a tower of that size?
Uh, thank you, Alderman Quinn. Um, what I meant was that, you know, so the FCC's regulations with respect to radio frequency emissions, uh, apply to, you know, e- each, uh, antenna include, including array, you know, towers that have multiple arrays. And so every aspect of the proposed tower with the three arrays will comply with those FCC regulations.
Okay, so, and, and, and I apologize if this sounds really stupid, but, so my question is if right now there's just, um, one cell array up there, um, wouldn't you be tripling the, um, emission with three? In that, in that area?
You know, I'm not a radio frequency engineer and I don't know, I, I know the existing antennas are of a certain type and then there will be these new antennas that are of different types. Um, there will be more antennas, uh, but all of them will operate within the limits that the FCC has determined are safe. And as we saw on that, um, electromagnetic spectrum chart, you know, the type of energy that's emitted from these facilities is very similar to, um, you know, what we commonly, um, experience in our daily life, uh, with respect to things that we take for granted like radios and televisions and cell phones. Um, so, you know, the research has shown that, um, you know, having a tower with, with these multiple antennas, uh, has not been demonstrated to have any negative health effect.
So, but you're-
As long as the FCC limit, which, which would be.
So your chart showing that this tower with multiple arrays on is equal to cellphone?
Well, I don't know if it's-
That's the chart I'm looking, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, and it, it, it's a spectrum. It's obviously, uh, an illustrative graphic, but it's, you know, it's, they're both within the same general spot on, on the spectrum.
Okay. And then one final question, and, and this is just to echo on what, um, Alderman Lovinson had mentioned. Is it possible for us to get the documentation of, um, what Crown Castle had, um, told us that they were going to look for other locations? Is it possible to see the documentation of who they contacted and what the outcomes were?
Uh, I, I, I defer to the city attorney, but on this one, uh, you know, the public hearing record has been opened and closed. Um, you know, we have testimony on the record with respect to that. Uh, I don't know if it's possible to provide that. I also don't know exactly what type of evidence might exist. You know, some of these things are done by, you know, calling people or, you know, using brokers to try to find locations. So I would, uh, I'd have to check with Crown Castle about what, if anything, uh, they would be able to provide.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Mayor, I just have one more question, Alderman Morgan Adams.
Um, yes.
You stated that the, um, that the replacement tower will not materially affect property values. Um, and, um, my question is what, what research or what, what have you done to determine that? Because, okay, there is a poll up now, but it's not with three different, uh, you have three, three different, uh, you know, uh, prongs for the, for different cell communication systems. So how do you know that adding all of that won't increase property values? What have you done to determine that?
Well, as I described the look before, I mean, we, nobody's done, to my knowledge, a, a particular study, but, um, you know, of, of the location. But what we know about, um, you know, from, from our, from Crown's experience and, and from the valuation of real estate generally is that there's lots of different factors that go into evaluation. And it's very difficult to attribute an increase or a decrease in value to any single factor. Uh, and that's especially true in a case like this one where, you know, there is already an existing tower and the properties are already located next to a fire department, which, uh, some people might consider to be a less favorable location than, uh, a property that's not located adjacent to a fire department due to, you know, noise and other factors that, that you might see there. So, um, you know, to an extent, i- if there is any negative effect, it's already baked into the value of those properties and it's, um, you know, that's difficult to say what if any other effect, uh, would be had. A- and then, you know, if you take into account the fact that there are also, you know, positive attributes to having, um, y- you know, good coverage in an area, uh, given that we've all become, uh, very used to and dependent on multiple types of devices that require cellular service, uh, you know, there are some people who become extremely frustrated if, if their devices aren't able to connect and, uh, find that to be, uh, a, a negative. So, um, you know, taken together, there, there's really no evidence that, uh, this would materially affect, uh, reduced property values. Um, a- and that's, that's all that we can really say from the record at this point.
Well, thank you, but let me ask you a simple question. You live in a home, you spent money, you did a lot of good things for the home. 50 feet away, there's a 110 foot tower, pole, monopole, whatever. You don't think that would affect your sale when it comes due?
I, I can't, I can't engage in speculation about, about that, Mr. Mayor, especially when there's already a 112 foot pole in the same location. Um, a- and there are other factors that could contribute to, um, the value and desirability of a property in a location. Um, i- it's just very difficult to say.
Well, I don't have a difficulty in saying it. I've been in the business of real estate all my life, 54 years, with a la- very large company. And, uh, I, I can't see that as being the right answer. Uh, but, uh, we've questioned you, we've heard your reports, we've seen, some of us have seen the, uh, the slides and, uh, we appreciate your time and effort. But the last, uh, question I have is, I've been told several times by our attorney, if we don't buckle down and work with you people, we're going to get sued. Now, is that a true, uh, statement?
Uh, Crown Castle strongly prefers to, um, obtain approvals for all of its projects, um, through cooperation with the local authority. And it has got out of its way to try to accommodate all of the reasonable concerns and requests that have been made of it. And that was part of the reason why we discussed some of the history behind this application. Um, you know, withdrawing the first application, redesigning the project and offering it to be a monopine instead of a monopole, withdrawing the height variation, um, you know, going back down to the PZBA, uh, for the previous hearing to reopen it and, and discuss it and then coming back before you today. Um, I can't say that Crown has decided one way or another about what might happen if this application, uh, were to be denied, but Crown believes strongly that it has satisfied the special use standards, number one. And we also, and, and therefore, we believe and respectfully request that the city council approve the application. We also believe that under the Telecommunication Act, uh, it would be a violation to disapprove this application. And Crown would have no choice but to consider its alternatives if this application were disapproved. I think that's about all I can say about that tonight.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just, just, uh, just a quick one. You had said that Crown has done all it can to, to accommodate the people who are, you know, the residents nearby that aren't happy with it. But outside of a foot or two difference on the height, what, I mean, you, you still have a 110 foot tower with, uh, three co-locates on it. How is that different than, than your application? The original app, wha- what, what more did you want than 110 foot tower with three co-locates on it before you submitted your special use?
Uh, was that Alderman Lovinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, well, I, the tower, as we've discussed before, in order for it to, you know, function appropriately and effectively address the coverage gaps, needs to be about that size. That, that's from the testimony of the radio frequency engineer. So I, I think the initial tower that, that, um, Crown proposed was a little higher. You included, um, the lightning rod and the fire department antenna, uh, and went up to something like 115 feet. Uh, but after, y- you know, after there was some concern expressed, uh, a- about the height, you know, Crown did redesign the tower so that it could accommodate 110 feet all in, which is shorter than the existing tower. Um, but there are limitations to how far the, the tower can be reduced and where, you know, this is about, this is as low as it can go from, um, the perspective of the radio frequency engineer. So, um, Crown is not able to address that concern to a greater extent than it already has in order for this to be a viable tower. Um, and, you know, it, i- i- it shouldn't have to choose between, you know, uh, a tower that doesn't work and a tower that completely satisfies the height concerns. It, it has, um, it has reduced the height to the extent that it is able. And, you know, the other way that it has tried to respond to the concerns is, is to redesign the tower, um, to provide the monopine design, which, uh, is intended to conceal from view the antenna arrays so that, um, you know, they may be less objectionable aesthetically to, um, to the community. You know, we un- we understand that in the course of, of presenting that option, um, some people actually preferred the monopole version, but it, you know, I think, uh, that was a sincere effort by Crown to try to address those concerns and come up with another alternative that would also work for Crown. Um, the, um, you know, I, I, I think those, those are, it should, you should know that the, the monopine option to design and build is more expensive than the monopole option and Crown was willing to propose the monopine option, um, anyway. Um, but at this point, you know, if the city council prefers pole, um, Crown is happy to design the, the, the facility that way. And if the city council prefers the pine, it's happy to do that alternative. Um, short of those things, um, I, I don't think there are other ways that those types of concerns can be addressed.
So you had just said that you were trying to make this work for Crown. Um, Crown has a current client that's on the tower now, correct?
It does have a current carrier within the existing tower. The facilities of that carrier have become obsolete there and, and therefore even that carrier would like to have, um, you know, a modernized antenna. Um, the, the, the type of, the type of antenna which is located within the existing pole is no longer in use and it's no longer, um, you know, adequate for the purpose of modern wireless, uh, technology and transmission. So, um, a- and the, the point I was making, Alderman, is that, um, you know, Crown is proposing to build a wireless telecommunications facility here and it's willing to adjust its design and, and address to the extent that it can the reasonable, uh, concerns and comments by the public and the board and, and, and the council. But, um, it, it, it can't, it shouldn't be expected to, to change its design in a way that would cause the tower to, uh, no longer function the way it needs to function in order for it to be a viable tower moving forward.
Right, but when you keep saying the tower and a viable tower, I'm talking about their current client. So everything you're doing, is this, and tell me if I'm wrong, everything you're doing from the height to how you're building this thing is to accommodate more users on the tower and you're throwing that in our face because we would rather have a co-located tower if two or three people came to us at once and said, hey, let's go put one tower up instead of three. But you've even said today that the height is dictated by having three paddles on there, correct? If you only were going to just have yours, you wouldn't need to be that high?
I don't know if that's true, um, but you are correct that the proposal is to co-locate three carriers at the existing location because that is what is necessary to address the coverage needs of the carriers in the area. And, um, and so that is what Crown is proposing to do.
So Crown is concerned about clients they don't have yet. That's that, as you said, we can't even see what the paddles are going to look like because they don't have clients yet for those paddles. So we couldn't even see a design for that. So we have to allow you to build this tower and hope that whatever paddles, whatever client you might get puts them up that aren't, make this thing from hideous to really hideous.
Uh, no, Alderman, they've had, uh, a- agreements to locate, I don't know if they're written agreements, but they, they have carriers lined up for, um, for the tower, but those carriers are not willing to, um, prepare final designs for the antennas until they know that it will be a loca- a permitted location. Um, so we're not able to provide the final designs of their specific antenna arrays for the-
So for Crown, so for Crown Castle's, so for Crown Castle's financial benefit, you're asking us to approve the tower so then you can go out and get the clients to, to put on it? So you're not, you don't even have a need right now for the other locations. You're doing this that if you get this, then you're going to go out and get more clients. So you're asking us to approve something that's big and, 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 um, you know, could be located somewhere else. As you said, there's other locations for it within your footprint that you need. Uh, so you're asking us to approve this so they can go out and get more clients, basically. Is that fair to say?
Uh, no, Alderman, I disagree with that statement. Um, they, Crown has orders and expressions of interest from other carriers who have demonstrated coverage gaps in the area and who would like to address those gaps by locating their antennas on this tower. However, those carriers will not prepare final designs of their antennas until they know this tower has been approved by the city council, uh, because otherwise they're, um, they, they can devote those resources to other designs. So the, the only context in which we were describing that scenario is that, uh, we cannot provide final designs of the antennas until the carriers provide them to us and they will do that after they, you know, after we've received an approval for the tower that demonstrates to them that they can proceed to the final design stage. But we do have orders from carriers and carriers who are, you know, intend to put their antennas on this pole if it is approved.
So you're asking us to vote yes so that we could find out what these things are going to look like?
No, Alderman, we've already demonstrated the maximum dimensions of the antennas which would be posted on the, uh, you know, uh, affixed to the, uh, tower. But we are unable to provide the final design of those, uh, of those antennas, including the dimensions, until we receive the approval. That is correct.
So some carriers might have smaller paddles than others?
Some carriers may have smaller antennas than the 12 foot by 12 foot by 12 foot triangle that's depicted on the site plan.
So should the city have, so the, so the city have say to say it's, since you already have them as a, a client and you're asking us to give you a special use, shouldn't we have say then in, in who your clients are going to be so we can pick the smallest paddles?
I, I think the city can review the final plans for the, uh, tower at the building permit stage to assure that they satisfy the requirements, applicable requirements of the code and, you know, do not exceed the least area.
I don't believe we have a code as to how big paddles are.
Well, there, there probably are building code requirements that apply to the construction of any structure. Um, but the, the final, there will be, you know, permit issued before construction and those permits would be reviewed by the city.
All right, and only because you offered it up, can you have your Crown Castle representative tell us where and, and what was the impediment to, to using a different location?
Sure. Travis, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Uh, this is Travis Schenk from Crown Castle.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Hope you and your families are, are safe, uh, through this time. I, uh, yes, I can, I can speak to that very, um, briefly. Um, we did have some, I was not involved with the negotiations directly with the, with any landlords. Um, one of our, um, one of our spots, uh, was actually a, a corner across from, um, the current location of the tower. It presented the same, same issues, however, that we're seeing with this current location. Um, we know in the, with the Telecommunications Act that it, we have to pass a two-pronged test, basically. Um, and, and so the, the site needs to be- And, and so the site needs to be zonable and leasable. And so in this, the, one of the locations that we were looking at, we did struggle with the, with the leaseability of the, of the location as well as the zoneability of that location. So, and that's really why we're sticking with this current location is that we already have a zonable spot as well as a leasable spot. And so we felt like the least intrusive means to, to the community in this area was to figure out a way to co-locate on this existing tower. Unfortunately, the design for the, for the existing tower does not permit structurally a multiple co-location. So that's, that's why we went with this and with the, with the design and this proposal, why it's in front of you at CBA.
So you just said this because, okay, so you said because it couldn't have multiple locations on it, that's why you have to have a new tower?
That's why we have, we can't, there's, there's a few factors here, right? So you've got a very skinny flagpole design.
Did you, did you build that one?
Um, no, I believe that was, I believe that was the existing carrier Sprint that built that, and we acquired that tower.
So you bought it knowing how big it was and what could be done to it though, right?
Not specifically, we don't buy, usually we don't buy towers specifically, we buy them in a portfolio. So just the history of telecommunications in the United States, basically, a lot of, most carriers kind of went out on their own at the, at the beginning and built single-use towers. They struck deals with communities and just put their, their antennas on a, on a tower, co-located, I'm sorry, not co-located, located, single, single-use towers, just so they could get their infrastructure up and running. So then the FCC and, and the industry noticed that community, that communities were really being affected by the proliferation of towers. And so, and since then, over the, over the last decade, co-location has become a very important aspect, even, even in law, telecommunications law, as well as the new 6409 and the final rule and order. So both, all, all three of those things kind of show how important co-location is. And that's why we're also here tonight, trying to illustrate that, that by, by having this co-location, this co-locatable tower here, it will tend to keep other towers from, from being developed in your community. And that's an important factor to, to consider tonight as well. Hope that answered your question.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that was quite a discussion, I guess. I have a lot of comments, but it's late and I think we're all tired. What's the next step, John, with this process that we're trying to go through? Right now, our agenda says we should be picking one or the other, the monopine, the Christmas tree, which is the ugliest thing I've ever seen in my life. And I'm old too, and another regular monopole. Isn't that what we're trying to get done, John?
Yes, Mayor, at the next council meeting, we will move over to voting on second reading and determine monopine or monopole. Voting on that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you can hear me, but does the public get to speak at some point before we close this session?
Dan, you've notified the required public closest to the requirement, how many feet they are located from the area that they want to put the pole up, isn't that right?
The public for the ZBA notice was properly sent out and attended the other night. Is this Mr. Lehor?
This is.
It sounds like you said.
Yeah.
I believe he's, he's here to speak to the matter as he is one of the neighbors and this is being a public meeting. I think he's looking for public comment, which did not require the notice. He did testify at the zoning hearing on Thursday night because he did receive proper notice.
Right. I didn't know he was there. We, we can't close this meeting without a public comment that has been sitting there all night, listening to this stuff. Mr. Lehor, can you take the microphone?
Sure. Do I need to be sworn in and provide my name?
You need to provide your name and preferably your address, although that's not a requirement.
It's Scott and Amy Lehor, we're at 9 East Clarendon. This actually kind of snuck up. I was under the impression from our last, the PZBA, that the next step was going to be on August 10th. So I was just made aware of this and unfortunately I was on the way to coach local softball. So my wife's been listening in, so I don't want to talk to things because I didn't hear the whole, I think I've heard the presentation before, but I think she would prefer to talk. I did have a question on, with the city council, with the packet that's provided, was my presentation a part of that, that I put together and presented last Thursday at the PZBA meeting?
Joe, can you tell us what?
I'll, I'll ask Mr. Peterson, who worked with that throughout the PCZBA process. He's more familiar with that than I am.
All right.
Mr. Lehor's presentation was part of all the exhibits that were sent to the council with the cover agenda. Due to the shortness of time, this happened Thursday night, his presentation was online. We put together the information for council on Friday and Mr. Lehor's exhibit was provided to all the council members in the mailing. So it is still on file, we do have it, and all the Aldermen did get the copy of the PowerPoint.
Prior to, did they have time to, to look over that, prior to this being Monday? Was it submitted on Friday?
They, it was, it was delivered Friday, and the notice for public meetings is a 48-hour notice. And so all the packets were delivered with the attachments, with all the exhibits.
Okay, all right. I'll just make one comment and then I'll turn it over to my wife. I think that there seems to be, trying to push this thing through. I think that in the PZBA meeting, in my opinion, we're starting to talk about whether they want a micropine or a monopine. I think that the actual decision really should be having something there to replace that or not, not what it's going to look like. I think we're kind of going past the fact that this isn't concealed, this isn't stealth, whether you put some branches around it or not, it's going to be conservatively bigger. It's definitely going to impede property values, which I think anybody looking at what's there now and what's their position, one way or the other, is going to be, and there are some, is going to impede property values and the enjoyment of my property. There are some things in my presentation that talk to that, and I won't go into that in detail, but I just feel as though we're getting bullied by lawyers. The fire department's no longer even on these calls anymore, and they're the ones that basically started this whole process. So it's a little frustrating as residents to see that we've gone through the PBCA now four or five times with not being recommended. We went in front of the council, now this will be the second time, and then it sounds like it's going to go through a third time, and it just all seems like it's rhetoric. And it's very frustrating, and I understand that they're a big company and they have deep pockets, but not only from the residents that are going to be adjoined to this property, this is going to be in one of the center parts of our downtown. And nobody wants to say that, you know, when we have Deli For You changing things up and we're trying to beautify our downtown-ish area, that that's not going to have a factor where people are going to drive by and they're going to see this monstrosity, and it's going to be embarrassment to all Prospect Heights residents. So it's a little frustrating that we've been doing this for a year and a half, almost two years, and we're still kind of to the same conclusion of, of basically now determining whether it's going to be one or the other without basically pushing back on, on this big company. And we've taken all the health concerns out and all the stuff that we're not able to talk about and everything. I think it's just pretty obviously when you see these pictures, which we've not seen an actual picture of what it would look like. At the PZBA meeting, there were several questions in regards to the size of the pole, the distance, all of these things. Nobody on that call could answer it, and now it looks like it's going to go to a point one way or the, about one way or the other, without having any of these things that I think are very important to what this is going to do to our downtown area and what it's going to do for my, my neighborhood. And again, just very frustrating. I'll turn it over to my wife, but.
I think Scott touched on most of the things on my list, but the first thing.
Could you, ma'am, could you possibly state your name and, and your address?
I'm sorry, Amy Lehor, 9 East Clarendon Street in Prospect Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one thing I think Alderman Ludwicksen had already commented on was what I heard Mr. Camalucci say, that they had looked at other areas, but this communication tower is not appropriate to put in an area of single-family homes. We are an area of single-family homes, we just happen to have the fire department behind us. So I wanted to point that out. Also, Mr. Camalucci said that they're using the same site and the special use permit is already in order, but the special use permit for that pole was the concealed self-pole only, not for a new big pole with an array and multiple carriers. From my understanding from the PZBA meeting, they're going to take down this old pole and put up a new pole, a distance away from the current pole. So the, they mentioned there's no, there's a coverage gap in the area. I know there's a huge three-ring array down by Dave's Auto. There's also something attached to the Randhurst Water Tower. I don't know, those, those two areas are two to three blocks away from the current location of our south tower. Mr. Camalucci mentioned about the measurements, that he said they were accurate on the plans, accurate meaning they're going to stay in that least area, but how can they when they have the branches of a fake tree hanging over them and how wide the array is going to be? That's still indeterminate. I'm concerned that this is going to be absolutely, the girth and width of this is going to be so huge. And then last but not least, all right, I want to point out that the residents in Prospect Heights provide $4.2 million to the fire department. This communication tower will only provide $18,000 in revenue for them.
Annual.
Annually. And I think that's all I have. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Well said. Thank you for staying so late to share your thoughts and fears and helping the council understand what the people think. We're here to serve the people. But I did talk to the FCC, I talked to the, and John, our attorney knows this, sent them a letter and spent time with the deputy of the Federal Communications Commission. It's a threatening event in my mind, and I, I, I hope that it doesn't come to a threat. I've said to the PZBA several times, are there any other areas that can be considered that won't be as obtrusive as this one is going to be or make our citizens as unhappy as they are? And to date, I haven't seen anything come back. Now I'm hearing that other places were considered, and it almost sounds like that the owners of those lots wanted too much money. That's may not be true and it may not even be relevant. But this is not over, and, you know, in the final analysis, if we can't come to terms and Crown decides to take us to court, we'll be there. That's my personal opinion and that's my thoughts on the subject. Is there any other, are there any other people that want to? We've got a couple items left on the agenda, and that's why I'm asking to, you know, say more, or have you heard enough and we can move on? If you have something else to say, reference with your name and go ahead and say it, but this is the time to do it, and please don't take too long. Thank you. All right, Joe, it sounds like we can move on for the moment anyway.
Very good, thank you. Next is listed just for informational purposes, discussion topics for next workshop meeting. Item nine, we have approval of warrants.
Okay, thank you, Joe. The approval of warrants total came out to $186,777.08. We had wire payments on July 17th, 2020. We had a payroll posting of $206,317.17. On July 20, 2020, the police pension funding amounted to $81,421.60. The total warrant amount was $474,515.85 for council's approval. Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve.
Can I have a motion? We have a second. Any further discussion on the warrants? Thank you. Any further discussion on the warrants? If not, Joanna, please take a roll call.
Okay. Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams? Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Joe, is there any other order of business to consider?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on non-agenda matters submitted?
I don't have anything submitted, but I have a question if I may.
All right, go ahead, Joanna.
Thank you. On the Club Hawthorne off-track betting, if Dan Peterson could help us out with that, I, it's just something I don't understand, is, does this club wants an additional location in the city of Prosper Heights? Is that what that expectation?
No, let me help you out quickly. It's at the Players Pub, who has horse racing and slot machines, and they now want to add, because it's legal, football games, baseball games, betting, and that kind of thing. Same location, same people. Hawthorne people have been great in cooperating with us for anything, and I'd like to help them out if we can. Plus, it's a personal thing. We get more revenue, and that's what I look for all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, I understand now.
All right. Joe?
Very good. Executive session, none is requested, which brings us to item 13, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Aye. Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Quinn?
We have a motion and we have a second. I never know if I should take a roll call, but I'd like to do it because you're all there somewhere and I can't see you. So let's take a roll call for approval of the adjourn, adjourn, adjournment.
Adjournment, okay. Alderman Ludwicksen?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Thank you, that's a 5-0, and I'm in favor of it also. The meeting is adjourned, thank you.